So, thanks everyone for waiting. Sorry that took longer than scheduled. Reconvening, meeting to open session. We'll be taking public comment first. And then I do want to, probably a lot of you are here for the superintendent transition portion. So, please feel welcome to make comments on that now. Depending how that goes, we may allow additional comments during the discussion. But, please make some prepared or any planned comments you have on that now.
Should we please just sign off to make comments?
I don't think we have a formal sign in sheet. If you can just kind of line up organically. We don't have like huge, huge crowds, so I think we can do this magnetically. If several of you want to speak, which, well, could people raise their hand if they want to speak? So we've got about four or five. If you could try limiting your comments to a minute or two, that would be fantastic. Just a couple of quick words before we launch into public comment. I do want to thank everyone for coming out. I know that there's a lot of transition and I think some questions. The last meeting, if you were here, Michelle read a statement that I think really did a fantastic job of explaining the situation as much as we could explain the situation. I think now and at this board, we're really focused on what we think is a tremendous opportunity. We're very excited about the new district. We're excited to move forward with searches for both the superintendent position and some other positions. You know, we have fantastic people. We are partying ways with someone who served the previous district well for seven years. And is someone we have a lot of respect for and wish the best of. And as Michelle explained, we came to a mutual agreement. And it got some unfortunate press. And we really hope that people respect that everyone did what was in their best interests. And that it's time to, I think, turn the page and really look forward. And we are, again, very excited about the new district. And very excited about the opportunity to build on the great things that both these communities have. And to bring leadership to this district that I think really reflects both the strengths that these school districts have and the tremendous values that we've been building on and want to build on further. So, we very much look forward to hearing what you have to say and a discussion about a process that I think will really kick off the district in a great way. So, Nathan?
Since you're wearing a suit.
Yes.
I'm not supposed to speak. Did you see that without?
Yes.
My name is Nathan Suter. I'm a Montpelier resident. As always, thank you guys. That's right. It is a "we." It is a new "we." I want to thank you all for serving and doing what you do. I'm here tonight because I'm watching carefully the process of finding new leadership for a number of really important positions in the administrative team for the Montpelier Roxbury School Schools. And want to express concern that we make those processes inclusive in terms of whose own committees and how the criteria are determined for how these positions will be chosen and how people will be vetted. I want to make sure that they are deliberate processes in a way that makes it possible to attract really exciting visionary, highly capable candidates. I understand that there are vagaries in terms of their constraints in Vermont, especially about how administrative contracts are and what the window is for availability of people. And so, I want to make sure, you know, the search committee for the curriculum and technology position, I believe, has a parent rep who's been found for that committee, which is fine. It strikes me that when the school board seeks to put together a committee, you know, people are submitting letters to say, "This is why I think I should be on this committee." And there's a deliberative process about who's included and why. And I would love to see that applied to these processes as well. You know, how many parents should be on that committee? What's the makeup of those parents? Same thing with faculty. And then, so I think that there are ways within the process, even within a fairly short timeframe, that these processes can be more robust, more inclusive, and to reflect the community that we have in terms of population interests. And also to be sensitive to some of the topics that this district has been really courageous about confronting in the last year. And so, let's not lose ground in that. Let's take those opportunities and move them forward. You know, that particular search closes this Friday. I would love if we were able to leave that open until filled, such that, you know, if we're doing affirmative recruiting, trying to attract candidates from further field or different backgrounds, that those folks have a chance to react to search. You know, that window's open only for two weeks. And then, that's a precursor to other searches. We've got a principal open. We've got a superintendent position open. Let's, as much as we can, let's get really good at doing this kind of process well, being inclusive in terms of who from our community is involved and intentional about how we are asking questions and what we're expecting of those candidates. And then, being aggressive about attracting great people to this district. I think we've got potentially one of the best districts in Vermont and one of the best districts in the Northeast, period. And let's make it so. And these hires are really important. So, please do as much as we can to make them well.
Thank you. Next person, please.
Hi. Is this on?
It doesn't project. It just disconnects.
Oh, it just goes to TV.
So people don't hear.
Cool. My name is Sylvia Fagan. I'm a Montpelier resident. I'm a homeowner, a taxpayer, and a teacher here in the Montpelier schools. I'd like to thank you all for your service to the Montpelier Roxbury School Board and Dr. Ricka for your seven years of service here. As a teacher, I'm both proud and encouraged by our young people of color who have stood in this position over the past months to demand that their lives are acknowledged and respected. I'm here in solidarity with them because as an adult in this community, I am humbled by their courage and I am abashed by the fact that they needed to make this demand of us. I'm here tonight to suggest that as the school district faces several open administrative positions, a purposeful effort is made to recruit a cohort of candidates from communities traditionally underrepresented in public school leadership. For example, women, people of color, and the LGBT community. I have heard from colleagues of color around Vermont that it is exhausting and demoralizing to be the only teacher of color in their district. I suspect administrators of color feel the same way. A cohort opportunity would provide support for folks as they would take on leadership roles in a primarily white district and state. I'd also like to encourage the board to adopt a policy that will ensure that a diverse candidate pool is intentionally solicited for all open positions in the district. And to that end, I'd like to encourage you all to learn about best practices in this regard, in the regard of hiring, recruiting, and retaining candidates of color and from underserved and underrepresented communities. We have several local organizations who could provide best practices, like CQ Strategies, the Anti-Defamation League, the Center for Whole Communities, and regionally and nationally, the Learning Policy Institute and the Great Schools Partnership in Maine. Both have resources on this, and I can provide these links if you'd like them. By the year 2045, people of color will make up a demographic majority in the United States. We've heard that data. But by around 2020, more than half of the nation's children are expected to be part of a minority race or ethnic group. And that means that the students who are leaving our district very soon are going to go into a world that's not as white as Montpelier. And the question I would ask us all is, will we allow our learners to leave our community having never encountered a school leader who is not white? Thank you for your time and your consideration of these ideas.
Thank you. Next, please.
I think you'll hear a theme. My name is Morgan Lloyd, and I'm, let's see if I can get all of this. I'm a parent of two children in the Montpelier schools. I'm a Montpelier resident and taxpayer. I'm a teacher at the elementary school in fourth grade, and I'm a person of color who, I would like to start by thanking the board for your listening over the last several months to Montpelier's students of color for listening to their experiences and for honoring their voices by making the decision to fly the Black Lives Matter flag. And I actually, those four open positions that we have have been weighing really heavily on me in the last week. And so, I have been thinking a lot and losing a lot of sleep too about this transition and hoping, like Nathan and Sylvia and other community members who are here, that our district can really take advantage of this opportunity. And so, I'd like to make a connection between that symbolic gesture of flying a flag in front of our high school to some really concrete actions that our school board and our district can take. These are critical positions: the superintendent, the director of curriculum, a building principal, and the facilities director, that are going to have a really, a long-term impact for years to come on hundreds of students. And so, I encourage our district to recognize this as an opportunity to not just make a token hire of a person of color or a woman or a person who is a member of the LGBTQ community. But I'm talking about proactively adopting a hiring process that will continue in years to come for all of our open positions to help us find highly qualified candidates who understand the importance of the work that we set out on when we made that decision, when you helped us make that decision to fly the flag, who will really prioritize it and help us make this world better. So, thank you for the work you're doing. Thank you for being conscientious supporters of our students and of our community.
Thanks, Morgan.
Thank you. Hi. My name is Amanda Garcés. I am a Montpelier resident, a mother of two, one that who's going to enter kindergarten this year, so I'm very excited. That is entering. And I am here as a mother of multiracial children who will be entering the school system that might not reflect herself. And I would like to encourage you to think about the students who are a minority, 10 to 15 percent, if I understand correctly, of the body of those students are non-white. And so, finding a place as, also coming as an immigrant that came into the school system not in Vermont, I could relate what that feels like to a lot of the students that are here. So, from experience, having somebody that is a role model that reflects yourself is a huge advantage to coming out of the school system into a person that looks at the world in a very different way. I would love to encourage you to think about how to recruit and retain people of color that is not somebody that is the token. I have been the token Latina in many places, and that also doesn't feel good. So, how do we think about retaining people that will stay within our communities, that live here and are with our kids in the long term? How do we think about curriculum? If we're going to hire a curriculum person, that's going to think about what kind of bias are we bringing into the curriculum system? So, thinking about all of those things and really making an effort that is educated. There's so much out there to be able to learn about how to do the right way. I want to thank for the support that the school district has done with the Rishous Justice Alliance, to all the students that have come out and are very strong. And I, as a community, would like to really thank you and hope that you continue to support them and to continue to support the ones that are coming, that are growing. And my kid that's going to come and hope that she will find a place where she can reflect her Latina mom and her white father and see herself in some of those role models. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Others? Well, thank you all. Those were very helpful and well said comments. Moving on to action items. We have approval of the minute.
Can I add one, please?
Yes.
Approval of teacher contracts. Not new, but teacher contracts for the MRPS for FY '19. We don't have a consent agenda for this board yet. So, I would do them, to be cautious, I'd do them individually.
I move that we approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chair, what, so superintendent's suggestion that we add something to the agenda does have to be actioned? Do we have to add it by action?
I don't believe so. I believe a member can add an agenda item at the top as long as it's one of the first items for consideration.
Okay. One of the first?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm happy to just keep going.
Okay. Oh, the new teacher contracts.
New. Those are different. Yeah. Existing. New hires. New hires.
Approval of the new teacher contracts.
I will move the approval of the new teacher contracts.
I'll second the approval of the new teacher contracts.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Approval of the 2018-2019 school calendar?
I move that we approve the 2018-2019 school calendar.
Discussion? All in favor?
Can it be better than last year's calendar?
shorter spring break.
Well, you know what happens?
Shorter spring break.
I'm just going to say that every year we approve the calendar, and I know that the calendar is put together by this consortium of many districts, and it's really hard to get everybody's schedules lined up. And there are a lot of considerations. But then, every year, there's some obvious problem with the calendar, and I wind up saying, "Who approved this?"
I can speak to one of the ones that we discussed because the MEA had a very thoughtful calendar committee with me. One of the problems that we run into when Town Meeting Day is later, as in the five, six, or seven, it pushes out a week. One of the calendar committee members has recalled us during the time of my superintendence in the past seven years, ending in the second week of June. And as we looked back at the dates for Town Meeting Day, that was typically when Town Meeting Day was closer to the first or the second. If you'll note, the last couple of years, Town Meeting Day has been as late as it can be, which is the sixth or the seventh, which pushes our February break out a little bit because it lines up with Town Meeting Day. And that's collectively bargained with one of our units that has both Town Meeting Day and the day before off. So, in order to make that change, which was a possible recommendation from the MEA, we would have to do that through collective bargaining at this point. We also had some data in which the leadership team discussed thoughtfully the idea of starting a little bit earlier. Instead of having a three, four, or five start, three days the first week, four days the second week, and five days the third week. That idea was met with substantial resistance from the MEA. They did not want to start any earlier. We looked at a number of different options and were really unable to settle on any massive changes to this year's calendar. What I will say though is, and it's worth noting, that in September, December, February, and March, there is an L listed on the second Wednesday of each of those months. That will be a late start for students for more professional development for teachers. We've heard consistently over a number of years how teachers are interested in more professional development. And we at the leadership team agree that there is a need for more of that. And with a bare majority of 275 responses, 50.4 of the 274 thought a late start would be better than the 49.6 percent who thought an early release would be better. So, the rationale for this decision was that we have an existing late start schedule that we are already comfortable using, that we occasionally have to utilize over the winter. It's well known to all. And it also is indicative of the fact that one of the few things, I can't think of something I'm more reluctant to do than to do an early release where I cannot guarantee students are going home to something that is safe and supervised. So, given all that, we chose to do those four late start dates, which will give us 10 additional hours of professional development without compromising any of our student days for next year. Still honoring the collective bargaining agreement.
Great. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
And the December break is a smidgen longer than this year's December break, which was too short.
Well, and you know, that, what ends up, what ends up happening is we try to go along with the federal holidays that we know that we have to give off. And again, depending on where that holiday fall, those holidays fall, we have to make adjustments that are reasonable to those dates.
Does anyone else remember what, any problems with last year's calendar?
Summer's too short.
Summer's too short?
That's all I got.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Great. So, that's all the items?
Nope.
That's all the items for the action.
Yep.
So, I move that we approve the MRPS teacher contracts.
Oh. Second?
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you. Now, we have two parent requests that we are going to discuss. One is a request to protect privacy, right?
It's a public document.
One is a request for a student to be exempted from the grandfather policy as part of a 406 merger agreement that will be governing our district. And the second is a request to allow an early start in preschool, again, in violation of the policy that we have in our district. I don't want to put you on the spot, Ryan, but I know Ryan has given a lot of thought to how to deal with these situations. We do want to stick as closely as possible to the agreements we made out of fairness and not to open floodgates to, you know, requests that may occur. And also, frankly, to really be true to the structure that we put together. And we feel like we've got a good structure. We feel it will work if people work with it. And so, those are important, but Ryan, if you don't.
Are we going to discuss them separately?
Huh?
Are we going to discuss them separately, or do you?
I thought Ryan might just give a quick overview of the 406 policy and then we can discuss them separately.
I think the only statement I would really make now is that I would reaffirm the work that the 706 committee did last spring in coming up with a proposal that was acceptable to both communities. We knew that there would be some folks who wouldn't be happy paying a few tuition costs for some of the Roxbury families who were still moving out. We knew there might be some Roxbury families who would have their hopes set on whatever plan was for their school education for some of their children. But at some point in time, we had to find something that was acceptable to both communities. And what we had found was that all children who were in seventh grade as of this year will not be grandfathered. So, that was a cutoff that was chosen for the grandfathering of those kids who were Roxbury residents or Roxbury district residents moving into the new district. And I, it is kind of tough. We're going to have, I've had a lot of phone calls. We'll have other requests coming forward to us in regards of, "Well, I wanted this," or, "My brother had this." So, I suspect this is not a solo request. I suspect we will see some more stuff, especially this first year, since everything is so new. So, I do, it is tricky because used to a small town and having exemptions here and there. But I really do think we would need to do our best to stick to the 706 committee agreement.
Ryan, could you just repeat that? So, the 706 agreement was that all students who are in seventh grade this year will come to Montpelier next year?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Wherever they are now.
Because they were in sixth, sixth grade last year.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Right.
And the thinking was that they had basically notice.
Right. It made, it was.
Yes.
They could have come here for seventh grade.
It was incentive to those students to really come to Main Street Middle School this year.
Yeah. Steve? And I mean, having served on that committee also, I want to emphasize that this was a compromise between two communities to establish a proposal that we thought would be balanced and acceptable to both communities. And so, we understood going in that there would be, there would, as Ryan said, voters, community members on both sides that would struggle with this decision and that we needed to come up with something that we thought struck a balance. And those compromises are difficult, and that was the nature of this particular provision. And it was not unanimous. But we established it in good faith with, through a negotiation effectively between communities. And so, it seems that now is the time to, in this first year especially, to stick with the agreement that the voters voted on.
Great. So, let's do, discuss these individually. To, yes, either one of the people who wrote the letters here?
To come on?
Yes, please do.
I'm Rhett Williams, a Roxbury resident. Those are my twin daughters, and I really didn't know quite what I was requesting. When I put that forward, I was just kind of trying to be proactive and get some information. And after considering, you know, from myself and my wife's perspective, the costs going down the road of them starting earlier are not worth the short-term benefit of them getting into a more sort of enriched environment. So, I don't know, I need to withdraw the request or what, but.
Which one are you, I'm sorry.
I'm the second.
You're the preschool. The preschool, right?
Which has nothing to do with the act or anything. I just was trying to get information, and I didn't realize that this would be the result of that. That's encouraging, actually. I'm happy about it. And glad to be part of this system and.
Do you need more information about preschool?
No, I just, yeah.
So, you would be happy if we followed the rules that were already set?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Yes.
Thank you, Rhett.
Yeah, thank you, Rhett. Thanks for coming all the way to Roxbury. Okay, well, then, that's.
There's someone here from the other family?
I'm glad you asked that question. Is there anyone else from the other family? I'm going to. Solenier?
Solenier.
Solenier Holter?
Solenier.
Solenier?
They are not here.
They're not here. Discussion on this one. Just to summarize, this is a student who, I believe, wants a sibling to be able to join another sibling at Sharon Academy, a younger sibling. The older sibling is grandfathered, I think it's the older sibling?
Yes.
And the younger sibling, they want to be able to join at Sharon Academy. Obviously, kind of my thoughts, I sympathize with this family quite a bit. I understand the desire to have continuity with your children. I also feel this is probably a situation that's, that there are more than one of. And I think we have to be very careful about the precedent we set and be mindful of, you know, kind of some of the things that Ryan outlined. So, for that, anyone?
I'll say, having been on the 706 committee also, that we knew it was a hard decision. And we knew it would affect some families, just as this is affecting this family. But we had to make a decision. We've made the decision, and I think we need to stick to it. Because I'm sure there will be lots of other families that would have some children in one place, and they'd wish to have more. And I'd like us to stick with that decision.
Other comments or? Is it a formal motion?
I I think you can just state the response to the requests. There's no, it's not, because there would be no, you know, a formal motion would be fine.
Okay.
So is it a motion to deny it?
It would be a motion to deny the request.
Do I have a motion to deny the request?
Motion's always made in the affirmative.
I know, that's why I was puzzling over and over.
I would make a motion to stick, I would make a motion to stick to the original agreement.
Yeah, motion to confirm the seven oh six.
That the seven oh six committee made as to who could, who could be grandfathered and who could not. How's that for a motion?
Is that too convoluted? Or maybe too broad?
Clear to the, to the folks who had a direct, who petitioned?
Well, I think Brian will be writing them a letter that will be clear.
How about a motion, can we write an affirmative motion for Brian to write a letter, deny the request?
No.
We could have the real request, the superintendent could deny the request.
Can we express that we feel terrible about?
Well, I think expressing our rationale might be appropriate.
Yeah.
That the, to be, to be consistent with the agreement that was recently voted on by both communities.
And we do, we do understand the difficulty of this.
Yeah, no, I.
We had a lot of discussion about it when we were making it.
During the merger committee?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is not being made in a flip or insensitive way at all, it's. And, you know, we, again, we discussed these at length, this seven oh six committee and. You know, we're cognizant that there were going to be some, you know, families that were put in less than ideal situations.
Okay.
So would you move?
Second?
Okay.
Any discussion, any further discussion?
I would just say, I would abstain from this vote simply because these are the girls that babysit my boys and. I support everything we have discussed and I'm not backing away from those statements, I just feel bad making the vote on my babysitters.
Understood.
I saw a quick candid audience.
I wanted to ask, I want someone on the board to ask how many families are in this position, hear the rationale that there's certainly going to be more requests down the road. And it's important to stick to the policy, but I wonder if that's five families or twenty families or if somebody knows. How many exceptions are looking at?
So that would be younger siblings.
While you're thinking, Ryan, this student is currently in sixth grade also. So it's, it's that if we were making exceptions for a sixth grader this year, then we, that would be sixth graders and seventh graders potentially.
And it might be, it might be a snowball too, because.
It's extraordinarily exceptional.
Well, in that case, it doubles the numbers.
Yeah.
It's not about making an exception to the rule, it's an extraordinary.
So we were discussing this as if this was the specific provision in the agreement around the seventh graders, but now we're hearing it's actually not that group. It's the, it's a group that, that is younger than that, so we'd have to look at all children. Who are currently throughout the system, who may have a sibling that's older. So now the numbers are more like forty or something like that. Forty potential kids, fewer families, fewer that would be in that bind.
Yeah, and it, it does mean, I mean, in the cost estimates we put together for the merger. You know, we only planned on tuitioning a certain number of kids and every time we, this is not just making an exception that's cost neutral. This is an exception that's. Right, a hundred thousand dollars every year to the district?
I, I think the other thing to say that we recognized, sort of agonized over is Roxbury has had a choice until now. And now they no longer have a choice, and we appreciate the fact that that was something that Roxbury gave up.
Alright, I think we're voting.
Yeah, I think we're voting.
Can I just make a suggestion?
Yeah, quick, and then Ryan just reminded me that we don't want to get into it.
I just, I just might not want to, I might leave a tiny window for extreme economic or other duress. I wouldn't necessarily make a statement now that cannot be, there may be time, I would, you know, I would just be careful of the, I would just not want to.
Say never, never.
That something, something would happen to a parent and who knows what, I just wouldn't want to have an overwhelmingly all encompassing ruling. That never left an opening for the possibility of future events if someone, who knows?
Yeah, and that's why I discourage Tina's, because there may be health or other reasons why. We, we may want to make an exception, but I think this honestly is the type of circumstance that we contemplated. And decided could lead to, you know, this is the tough choice that we decided unfortunately was was gonna fall on. On the way, which is outcomes is coming up. I lost track in the process, have we had a vote?
Please, we can motion and so we second it.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Ryan abstaining.
Abstain please.
Any opposed? Thank you. This was drawn, okay, so Brett, let the minutes show that the. First name is Rhett, but the, yes. Request was withdrawn after learning further information. So now superintendent transition, I just want to, I mean, I gave, I think, a lot of my opening remarks at the beginning. We obviously are looking for, actually, this will be the first superintendent for this district. You know, we are looking for a, an open, inclusive and transparent search. We really want to find the right leader for this district, a district who can, or a superintendent. Who can build on the incredible success that these two districts have and really make the union of these two towns and these two districts. Into, I want to make it the best school district in the state. And one of the best in the northeast and one of the best in the country, and I think we can do that. I think we've got the community, I think we have the resources, I think we have fantastic people who work in this district. And I think we have, you know, the community support to do that. So I am very, very excited about this search. People are already, you know, working hard and thinking about it. You know, that said, you know, it's gonna be, I think, a fast paced and challenging few weeks. We want to, we want to do this, this right. I really appreciate the concerns and the. The comments to making this an inclusive search and a search for a leader. Who is gonna really, I can carry forward some of the great steps that we've taken on diversity, equity and inclusion. You know, when we raised the Black Lives Matter flag, it was really a historic and very proud event for this district. I think certainly in this and other hires, we need leadership that's gonna build on that. We have, you know, we've made some symbolic gestures and I think that we need to follow those up. We have made some real gestures as well, but, you know, we need to continue, continue moving forward on that path. I think that's also a longer term discussion too, I think we certainly want to get the right leader in who reflects those values, who reflects other community values. Who's commit, absolutely committed to educational excellence. I, I do want to speak that we've got a short timeframe, we are gonna do as much as we can on diversity, equity and inclusion. We are probably not gonna be able to put all the systems in place that we'd ideally like to, and that's gonna be, I think, part of a longer term discussion. So it's not gonna be very realistic about, about that, that we, and we want input from all of you as the process moves forward. On how best to do that, but we do have, have a time limitation. We are probably talking about a, you know, four to five week search, just given where we're at.
Chip, can I ask you a question from the floor?
Yes.
Is an interim position a possibility?
We are gonna.
An interim superintendent position?
We are gonna talk about that.
Okay.
So I don't know if anybody else wants to just give some quick, some quick, high level views about the search. And please try to make them quick, because we have a lot of time.
I just want to just, so for folks listening, this is the very beginning of the process question, of the process thing. So no one's missed anything up to this point, we're really defining the process now. And that is the balance, is speed versus ideal. And that's where we're gonna have to focus on with this process is those compromises as we go along.
And Jim, might I ask, since it was brought up from the public viewers saying the item is to discuss the superintendent transition. Are you also discussing the curriculum coordinator in the principal position and the process would be the same for all of them or not?
I think we want to, we can discuss this as, as part of the overall transition. And I think the process is probably going to be slightly different.
Jim, can you describe that?
Because some of those processes are already moving.
We have a lot of new board members and so if you could describe how we do hiring different levels, that'd be great. Or maybe Brian could do that.
Brian can help, I'll, I'll take staff, Brian can help. What we usually do, I think it depends on the level of the position, I, you know, this is my first superintendent search. I think it's, is it every board member's first superintendent search? Yes. And this is part of the reason we're asking for help with VSBA and others, and Virgil and I can brief on the meeting we have. Yeah, I think one of the first steps is to, you know, kind of do the easy, the mechanical things that are not easy, but. Need to get done, job description, putting it out on school spring, putting it out on, you know, other venues. Setting forth the process.
Is school spring a national?
Yes, it is.
School spring is a national, yes. Well, let me step back, I think the first step is sitting here tonight and setting up the process we want to put forward. And just getting some parameters about timeframe, kind of how we want the position to look, how we want the search process to look. And then, you know, once we decide on that, very quickly moving to candidate recruitment, advertising the position, getting word out there. Doing so in a way that brings in as, as broad and inclusive a candidate pool as possible, which I think is, is very, very important. Then it's setting up a committee to do the hiring. And again, that would be a representative committee that we would want to be as, as broad and representative as possible. That would include members of the staff and faculty, members of the board, members of the community. And, and parents, yes, which I just consider the broader community, and students as well.
And how would that, how would that, the parents will want to know how that selection will be made, have we decided that yet?
We have not decided that yet, we have not said anything. Yeah, I, I think certainly that, to me, the selection of the committee, I think, given the short timeframe we're on, is one of. The things we can do, I, I think with the time that we have. To, to bring in a lot of the diversity, equity and inclusion issues, I think making sure that we get a very represented, that, that is something we can't do. And we can't, I'm not sure we can, can do a lot of detailed trainings in five weeks. But I think we can get the right mix of people in, I think we can sit down and put together. You know, a rubric that accounts for the, the values we want to see, the values and the skill set we want to see in this position and do that in a very deliberate way. So putting that, that, I think we have to decide a process to put that committee together. And I think one of the things we should really focus on is making sure that it's a very representative committee. You know, and includes, you know, we don't want it to get too huge, but we certainly want all the various. You know, sectors of our community represented and, and kind of within those, you know, sectors, students, faculty, board, et cetera. We want to be as representative as we can and really get all the voices from our community involved.
Would it be helpful if we kind of went through what we learned from the VSBA consultant? He gave us a lot of detail and I'm happy to go through what he gave us. So Jim and I had a call with a consultant that works with the Vermont School Boards Association. We could hire them to help us as a search consultant to conduct the search. And so this was a preliminary meeting to find out what that would look like and to get some preliminary information. His name is Mike Dewis, he's a, he's a retired superintendent in Vermont. He basically outlined the expedited process for a full superintendent search. That would start essentially immediately, gave us a sample schedule. So this would give a sense of the timing, and his sample schedule would start with, first meeting with the board would be next week. So that would be the board's chance to meet with the consultant and get the lay of the land, and the screening committee would immediately start meeting after that. And would, the advertisements would go out kind of right after that meeting too, so the job would start to be posted on school spring. Choices about advertising would be made and it would be advertised. And the screening committee would start looking at applications, then reviewing applications, having their interviews. And his, so his process would basically, to have someone, you know, in the, in the position by July first, would have the board doing final interviews. The week of June eleventh, so it's basically, one, two, three, a six week process that starts next week.
Yeah.
So I'm not saying that he, he, he didn't say there was no flexibility in that, but he basically said that's where, that's where the district would be at this point. Their services, so the board knows, the services of the consultant would cost eight thousand dollars.
No, it's cost thirteen thousand.
His services would cost eight thousand and, and then he estimated another five thousand, four hundred in other costs related to the search, like doing the advertising and that sort of thing.
Which, which is a cost we would bear whether we have a consultant or not?
Most of it, I think that's right.
Some of it.
The advertising is most of that number, which we would have regardless, and some travel costs for inter, for interviews. If the superintendent worked for us, the scope of service, I'll describe this. Includes managing a board appointed screening committee, guidance with board advertising recruitment efforts and support for the board interviewing finalists and board selection of its superintendent. He did not really get into the screening committee, exactly what it would look like, but.
Yeah.
That would obviously be a very early step in the process. He also talked to us about interim appointments and permanent appointments. And was indicating that advertising for interim appointment was not likely to garner very many candidates. And that it might even be too early to find an interim appointment. He also pointed out that it's unusual to find someone who wants to do an interim appointment for a full year, because. Retired superintendents who might want to come out of retirement to do short term gigs can't come out and do a full year's work and still stay in the retirement system. So that's a consideration that he raised. He said, you know, you can do both, you could do a full scale permanent search, search for a permanent person now. With the interim as a fallback if you don't find someone that you want. And he also brought up the possibility of doing a full scale search with the understanding that it would be a one year contract. And then, did I, is that everything we covered there?
Yeah, I think so, you know, and, you know, the, the exact time frame we laid out was. Saltwood meeting of the board, the sixteenth, the screening committee would have its first meeting the week of April thirtieth. Then there would be a second meeting the week of May seventh, third meeting the week of May twenty first. This would all be, you know, screening candidates doing interviews. Final meeting of the screening committee the week of May twenty eighth and then board interviews and likely hire the week of, of June eleventh. I had a further conversation today with Nicole Mays, she had a slightly different take on, to be honest, we've, we've heard.
Every different argument.
Yeah, we've heard every different argument, we, we are definitely later in the process than ideally we'd like to be. You know, a lot of people have, have signed contracts. It would be difficult for a lot of candidates to either get out of their contracts, they, they might need permission. Or they might feel it's unfair to their district at this time to, to pull out, you know, that said. You know, that said, you know, we have heard that there may be, this is an attractive district. We may still be able to get a lot of attractive candidates. I think, given that this is something we're gonna have to discuss and decide on now, some sort of short-term initial situation is probably, has a lot of. Whether, and the two options that are basically given to that, as Bridgette said, is either actually go for a true interim, someone with the understanding and, you know, that they'd just be here for a year. We would get a search as soon as we could within that year. The drawbacks of that, you know, as Bridgette said, is it might be difficult to find someone willing to do that. The second drawback is oftentimes anyone in that position is really gonna be in kind of a keep-the-wheels-on-the-bus mode. The other kind of short-term option would be to do a one-year contract that would, where that candidate would have the, you know, would have the knowledge that it was both one year and that we may, we would have an early evaluation process. So by, say, October or November, we'd made a decision whether this person is wowing us and the person we want. Or whether we conduct a search because now we're at a point where we're gonna have a richer applicant pool. And where maybe we don't feel it's working out with this candidate. That would probably attract a slightly different pool. We may get people who obviously are, you know, want the job on a more permanent basis. We may get, for instance, you know, a principal who, you know, is ready to take the next step. Or another school-wide administrator who's ready to take the next step, you know, and wants to come in and impress us for a year. So those are kind of, I think with the timeframes, the options we have. We could obviously discuss doing a search for someone at a longer term. But from, you know, one-on-one discussions I've had with board members, I feel that, you know, there's not a lot of appetite for that. And certainly, you know, this is, this is a tight timeframe. And we want to make this process as inclusive as possible. There's, there's a lot of work to be done, both to meet this timeframe and, you know, to cast a wide net, both in terms of candidate pool and in terms of a process that's, you know, very inclusive and very involved.
I'm not sure. A lot of times when we do go through hiring processes, we find that our decision is based on who we come up with. It's a fishing expedition effectively. And I'm wondering if maybe we fish in two pools at once with looking at advertising for an interim and advertising for a permanent one-year contract or something. And we see the applicants we get. Maybe, there may be some very practical reasons not to do that. But it is, if those truly are two different types of applicants, we might find that we're finding stronger applicants in one area rather than the other. It certainly adds to our workload a little bit, at least at the beginning. But I don't think it really changed anything as you get into it. So at least throw it out there as something to put in the pot to mix up. I've often found when I'm doing hirings, I'm hiring for multiple positions at the same time. And there's a lot of cross-fertilization in that process. And you end up finding people in one pool that you want in the other or whatever. So.
And just one more quote before I go to Tina. The other thing that Mike said and some others that we've talked to have said is that the urgency for like a one-year contract, that the timeframe here is for someone on a one-year contract or longer. I don't think, longer, we have that discussion. Like a true interim, like getting a retired superintendent to come out for a year and, you know, with the understanding that they truly would be only there for a year and then they'd go back to retirement or somewhere retirement. The timeframe for that is not as urgent. That's something we could start, you know, sending out feelers for, say, in, you know, May or.
Got it. Got it.
Just to follow up on that too, I think the sense from I got from Mike Dewey was that it's also a really different process. It's not this process of making that, of advertising. It's much more of a headhunter kind of process.
Got it.
Yeah. Like, yeah, don't feel like going to South Carolina again this winter, would rather run this district type of thing?
I guess I would reiterate the same thing. I would say, Steve, running them both at once just confuses the world. And that if you were to go out and say, I would like a superintendent, see who applies. If you don't get someone that you think is acceptable for the job, then you're later in the process and go find someone who might be an interim.
Well, that's a convenience sequence, so that works fine.
Hey Jim. Having been involved with a lot of hiring around the school calendar and higher education, I can tell you that trying to fast-track this over the next six weeks will probably fail on two levels. One is there will not be a sense of community involvement. And two, that you will be dipping into what would be a very shallow pool of people who are looking to make a change this late in the school year. And so I think that there, you know, as you said, maybe we can hedge a little bit and think about like putting it out there and see who applies. And maybe, you know, we get lucky. But, you know, on this kind of timeframe, in terms of engaging the community and seeing, you know, having a applicant pool that is meeting the requirements of what we've been talking about all night, I think it's, it's a long shot at best. So I just think that, you know, there, there needs to be sort of a short-term, like how do we manage into the next school year? As well as thinking about the broader vision of what, how do we make it work for, you know, multiple years to come. I just, I'm worried about six weeks. Like I just don't see how that could happen.
Yeah, I echo those sentiments and I'll let other board members speak. But my thought, for want of a practical concern, we have to have someone, a superintendent, and we've got not a lot of time to make that happen. You know, my sense is that regardless of who comes on, whether we have a true interim where we absolutely know that we're gonna do a search starting in the fall, where we're gonna have time to have the process that, you know, that's gonna be inclusive as we want it to be inclusive. You know, by then, do we have time to really, I think, think about some of the suggestions we've had about, you know, really digging deep on making sure that we've got practices in place that ensure that diversity, equity, inclusion are part of that, rather than kind of doing what we can in the next six weeks, which I think will be meaningful, but more time is always better on something like that. Even if we don't go to true interim, I think any hire we make before June 30th would be with the understanding either that we'd evaluate in, say, October, November. And if we had a superstar, great. Otherwise, we enter that type of process. Or frankly, do a one-year contract regardless of the person's performance. Tell, tell that person that we're going to do a search and you're welcome to apply. And if we love the person, they'll certainly be at the top of the queue. But, you know, make a, make a commitment basically to the community that there will be some sort of a revisitation of, of the hire in the fall. Whether it's just an evaluation of do we have the right person? Or whether we just commit to a process and if we have the right person, they apply again and they stick with it. So others?
Well, I was going to say that I've agonized over this for the last little while because an interim usually means sort of status quo or keeping things as they are. I happen to think we're doing quite well in Montpelier. And so that doesn't hurt me as much as it would perhaps somewhere else. But I like to go forward. So it's, it's an agony of, you know, if I could find the perfect person that would walk in the door now, I'd love it, right? But as you said, it's late in the game and it worries us. So I have to tell you what I've been back and forth about.
The members of the leadership team are here and I know they have thoughts on the process. I would love to get their thoughts, particularly on interim versus, versus one year versus one year with telling the person that we're gonna do a search and they're welcome to apply. And so if any of the, any of the leadership team members wanna, wanna speak. And don't just leave your comments to that question. You can weigh in on processes as extensively as you want to.
Yeah. Just wanna cover some of the hip-hop that's come up this year. No, no, thanks for the invitation and thanks to the community that spoke so eloquently earlier today. I really appreciate your thoughtful participations. Just awesome. So thank you all. And I think that we just agree that we see the challenge, that we want to cast a wide net and find a great person to lead the district for many years. And we recognize that we have some work to do in our practices and how we go about hiring. We want to improve those. We want to be as equitable as possible. We want to do better than what we already do. And we're in this really difficult time pinch. And so I, I think that those things are in tension with one another. I think our perspective and my colleagues will correct me if I'm wrong, is that we should put it out and do the good work, like you were saying, of putting together a really good committee either way. And asking really thoughtful questions, being as inclusive as possible, being quick studies and trying to cast as wide a net as possible. And then see, see where we are. And at that point, when, when you see what kind of applicants we, we have, we can make decisions from there about one-year contract. I think is what we, we think that you're gonna attract more people if you go along the lines of what you're saying, Jim, of having a one-year contract and just are upfront with that person, that we are going to put this back out in a year and you're welcome to apply. Or that gives that, those people a chance that we might attract a few more people rather than what is probably a fairly small pool of existing Vermont superintendents that would do, be interested in an interim position. So, is that fair? Okay.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. Anybody else wanna go or, Mike did a great job of something to that.
Yeah, he did. The only thing I would add is that.
Would you add it at the microphone so they can see you, hear you?
We have a big mouth. Thanks, Sylvia. I was just gonna say that I appreciate the fact that you've reached out to Mike Dewey. He's somebody who I have a lot of respect for. I think he knows the educational world in Vermont. And whatever advice he's giving you, I would, I would trust that he's giving you accurate, accurate information. So just wanted to say thank you for reaching out to some folks who, who understand the world of looking for a superintendent. So that's all I wanted to add to Mike's eloquent speech. Thanks.
We, we don't wing things as much as people think we do. We don't, I said, we don't wing things as much as people think we do. We get a lot of help.
But I'm not here all the time, so I don't know that. I just wanted to say thank you for that.
Thanks, Jim.
Could I just also add to Tina's point? This won't be a status quo. There's an operational merger that's happening.
Yeah, yes.
You know, and so even if an interim was being entertained, I would certainly echo everything that my colleagues are saying, that there's real operational work to be done. It's not a, let's just keep the trains on the track type situation.
No, absolutely.
And so I, I would fully support what's been said so far. Because I think there, there will be a lot of opportunities going forward that you're gonna, I would suggest you as a board are gonna want someone who has a deeper level of commitment than just an interim. I'll just keep everything as it is going forward because that's not defined for next year yet. We don't know what as it is yet.
Yeah, yeah, that's a very good point. Why do this? Because I know there's some people want to speak to this. Why don't I give another four or five minutes for public comment for anybody who does want to talk? And then, then I hate to shut you guys down, but then I think we have to make some decisions about process. But I see some, some hands. So if anybody wants to add to this, please feel free to come up to the mic and do so. Because I know this is a big decision and I think it's, it's worth hearing additional concerns.
To Nathan again, thanks again. I love the discussion you're having. I think that, as we've all said, there's a lot at stake. And Brian just made a great point about it's not just status quo. I think that the more, the more bait you put on the hook, the better fish you're gonna get, to continue with that metaphor. And so, you know, one year or longer, it's gonna attract probably higher quality candidates. And I, I wonder if we can borrow some from the, you know, professional sports world in all its glory. You know, what does, what does it take to lure candidates out of existing positions? Do you have to buy out, you know, do you have to pay that district a, a fee, right? As in professional soccer, I'm just spitballing here, but. Furthermore, one year and you're definitely enough to compete for your position again. Okay, maybe, that's high stakes if I'm moving my family or something like that. If it were one year and then, you know, if you, if you throw this many touchdown passes and this few interceptions, you get another two years on that contract and a bonus. It's capitalism, we're swimming in capitalism, let's play that game, maybe. This is high stakes and I think we could be creative about it. And I, and I think that, you don't want to encourage good professionals to leave commitments they've made to their districts. On the other hand, you know, we're, we're on the back end of that because we've got a bunch of professionals who are leaving for other places. And so, let's be aggressive about it. And the other thing to say, which is on the, on the back of what somebody, like I think was just saying is, as a board, as a leadership team, as a community, the more we practice doing good selection process, doing good process, the better we can be at it. And so an interim is like, we don't get to do that practice. We sort of, you know, we hire some headhunter. They look at a known pool of people they think might be decent. And we don't get to practice that. Like, let's, let's do this. Let's get a good committee together and let's try and we'll make some mistakes. And, but at least we're pushing forward and we're hearing from the community as you are tonight. And the more repetitions we get at that, and we've got four chances right now, right? We've got four processes about to happen. So I would, I would say, you know, at the very least, do the check down of a, at least a full year and then only an interim if we're desperate. And then maybe put more on the table, even though it's a short process, because we are trying to attract the best person we can possibly attract.
Okay, cool. Thanks. Anyone else? Great, thank you. So in terms of decisions, the decision we have tonight is whether we move forward with Mike Dewey's, which means that it would be a commitment to hire at least a one-year contract. And I think we can work out later whether it would be one year with, you know, an evaluation, one year when telling the person there's definitely gonna be a search. I think we'll work that out later, but I think we have to make a decision tonight about whether we're going to go down that road or whether we're gonna say no. We'll kind of do a truer interim, which I think is a process of working with VSBA. We're gonna go to Vermont Superintendent's Association, finding a list of potential candidates who would be interested in that and, and reaching out kind of a headhunter situation. So I think that's, that's the immediate question. So let's talk about that and then make a motion to take action. And Steve?
So would the motion be that we would hire Mike Dewey's and pursue a candidate for a one-year or more position? Is that how the motion might read?
Yes.
So it's two things. It's two, it's a compound kind of question there. That's fine. I don't know much about him and I, I hear a lot of good things. But I also know that our unique community may not fit the cookie cutter approach. And I want to be careful because I don't know what his particular expertise or experience is in tapping into underrepresented communities. And I don't know if he has a demonstrated success record in any way in doing that or even trying to do that. So I look to some advice for that. The other is, is there anything, would that contract include any headhunting? No. So.
He's not gonna have to respect.
Okay, so would we want to be doing that simultaneously, is getting out there and using a, a human resources person to be making some contacts at high levels to try to identify people who may be not actively looking but who might be the perfect candidate? And I wonder if we should be combining that approach and not relying on the let them come to us approach. Because we're late, we might need to double down on our efforts. So those two things would be my only hesitation, otherwise I'm full on with the approach.
Yeah, Ryan?
Okay, so a little more info on Mike and what he has to provide for us. So if we were to go forward with a one-year contract with the intention of doing a further search in the future, at what point in time does Mike leave us? So if we hire someone on June 11th, is that the last that we work with Mike for the eight thousand, thirteen thousand dollars it will cost us? Or would he stick with us through the rest of the year as we continue maybe the second phase of the search, if that is the route we ended up going?
If you pay him more, he'll stay with you.
So it will be, so June 11th would be the conclusion of all of our work with Mike?
Yeah, we would have to pay him more for.
Reengage.
Going into the future and doing a larger search.
Yeah, which, which.
A second search would be a second search.
Yeah, exactly.
We have a contract from the VSBA, a mandoline contract, they sent us what it would be. If we signed it, so. The consultant would meet with members of the leadership team and educators to establish goals for the search process, would assist the board to develop a written charge for the screening committee, these are all a little bit longer, I'm just summarizing them. Work with the board to identify priorities intended to assist the screening committee, guide the development of selection criteria, salary benefit, et cetera. Assist with planning for the inclusion of internal candidates if that comes to be. Actually, this list goes on for quite a while. It's scheduling interviews, helping the chief of process legal, helping formulate questions, including legal questions, guiding the screening committee and conducting reference checks, scheduling the appointments, organizing school and community forums, arranging for people to visit where the finalist candidates work as well as having them visit here. That was not even the entire list, but that's, that just gives you a sense of.
Yeah, and my sense from talking with Mike was that he was welcoming of community involved processes, and then kinda going to your point Steve, that he's not gonna be able to, it wasn't the type of thing where like, I've got it, you go away. Where if we say, look, we wanna do some active recruitment and bring some people to this process, that's gonna be welcome and not shut down. So I, I think the, you know, he's gonna perform some very basic and important functions, but I didn't get the impression that he would, would shut down an active community that was, you know, looking to expand the applicant pool, that was looking to do reach out, that was looking to do things beyond that.
Did, but Bridget, when you were reading that list, I didn't hear.
Yeah, I was trying to see if that was.
Well, that, I mean, obviously allowing an additional contract for someone else to do something else would be great plug-in, but is there a, is there a values, plumbing for values in the, in the community first before you go to the advertising stage?
There was a lot about criteria, you know.
In the development of criteria, at the meeting with the community.
Okay.
But I, you know, it's.
And the leadership team and.
Independent.
I think you're gonna find Steve, that there's very few in Vermont, seeing as we're one of two schools that have a Black Lives Matter flag up, I think there's, we are at the leading edge of a commitment to equity, both symbolically and in practice. And so I think guiding Mike or whoever the consultant is in that, as you often say, value for this community, because I, I would be hard pressed to name another consultant, given the demographics of Vermont, who has had substantial experience, simply because we're out there as one of the, one of the first to demonstrate a value and a physical value as well as a continuous improvement plan value to the notion of equity.
So your sense is that he has the, he has the skills to do what we need him to do in terms of reflecting, in terms of building a process around our values, basically?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I, I would say he certainly has the skills. I would also say that short of a, a headhunter, the only thing you're gonna be able to do is advertise in different places, it'll cost you more money, but you could advertise out of state and see what you get. The reason for the quick timeline is because of where we are in the process, it's April.
Yeah.
And so, one of my concerns is to have the community feel like they've taken part.
Exactly.
If it's quick, I'm not sure no matter what we say, Nathan's going to feel like he's had enough input or that enough time to think about it. So if you say you're meeting next week and you put that out somewhere, I don't know in the paper, will the community feel like they've had sufficient input? And I can tell you, 'cause the whole board's been discussing it, that that's part of the issue. How will we assure community involvement, do a quick, because we're in April, search and consider equity and diversity?
Well, and I think that's why the reason, that's why the reason, I feel strongly that we need to have a revisiting process next year to make sure that, that we have the right candidate, whether that's through a full-on hiring process or through kind of getting community consensus that yeah, this is, this is the right individual. 'Cause, yeah, I can see that already, that wow, you're meeting over spring, well, nobody's around over spring break, like, you know, what are you guys doing? And it's, it's not 'cause we're trying to hide anything, it's, it's just because we're, you know, that's.
We, we need someone.
The demands of the schedule.
In that office by July 1st.
Yeah.
I have to say, I'm disappointed that there's no compromise with Mike in that basically we'd have, if we were, I think we need somebody to help us, but we'd have to hire for two searches. That's a lot of money.
Well, or we could learn from the first search.
Yeah.
We could suggest the second ourselves.
Yeah.
I like that idea.
A smaller version.
There are also, I mean, there are professional search firms out there, but, and I, I've tried to find out information about them and it was very hard, very hard. I found some lists, but they didn't have websites and it was not easy to figure out.
It's kind of a word of mouth business, yeah.
Yeah, and a couple of them, you know, you found actually news type articles about them that were not very. It's not actually, I mean, it was, that, it was very hard to figure them out.
That's right.
Yeah, so I would move then that we hire Mike and for the agreed amount sum to conduct, to assist us in conducting a search for a, a superintendent under a one-year or more contract. And that we, this does not preclude a decision to enhance that search with an additional, with, with other methods, but this sets the, this puts the, the core administrative piece in place. And that, yeah, I think that's the big thing I'd like to, there's probably more to it, but that's, that's the motion I would, I would, oh, and then I think that, I don't wanna make this as part of the motion, so I'll just leave it at that, but I do think we need to make a decision in some recorded form about whether we have committed to revisiting this position shortly after it begins, but not, but my motion does not include that. So.
Yeah.
Hire Mike for the agreed pound amount to perform the contract that was proposed, to search, to assist us in searching for a superintendent for, under a contract of at least one year.
Do you have a second?
A second.
Any discussion, any further discussion?
I think someone's already suggested.
All of them?
This is crazy.
Any opposed?
I'm concerned that, that that second piece that I didn't propose may get lost in, in minutes or non-minutes for the future, so I, I hope that we can revisit at some point and make a decision, a concrete decision as a board, whether we definitely intend to revisit it in October or whatever, 'cause I, this could easily get moved around otherwise.
Well, we. If it's a one-year contract.
And we could put that in.
We have to have a process in place in October to make a decision.
Yeah.
So.
We're forced to do it.
I think you also have to be honest with the applicants. If you have to decide and say, we will do a search after a year, no matter if you walk on water or we won't, we just have to make that decision.
Yeah, I, I think, I don't think we have to make that decision tonight, but I think we probably do have to make that decision when we meet with Mike next week.
Well, we didn't just decide whether it's gonna be a one-year or a three-year contract. And so what my concern is that in the, as we go through this process, I just wanna be clear that we're, we've got a six-week process, we already know that we're not making this as inclusive as we'd like, or we doubt we can. So if we move into a three-year contract with somebody, I think there's gonna be a bit of a pushback on, from some of us and from the community, so.
Yeah.
We just have to be, be aware of that.
Yeah, no, I, I think we're all aware of that. I haven't heard.
Okay.
Tonight or in other discussions.
Great.
Anyone pushing for longer than a, a one-year.
Great.
A one-year contract. It's a question of, you know, whether, how, how we, how we do the revisit, whether we just tell the person upfront that, look, we're, we're doing a hiring process in October and if you allow us, you're willing to apply and you're certainly gonna have a leg up, or whether it's, you know, we're gonna take a, a hard look between now and October and if we have any doubts, we're gonna do another search. Alright.
So who will meet with Mike next week?
We, we will meet as a board.
Okay.
And I've got some days from Mike and I'll send out, I just have to go through emails and, and look at times, it's Monday, Wednesday and Thursday, I believe, well, Monday wasn't Thursday, worked for him. Can we just do a quick poll of which days work best for folks? And, and we need a quorum, not everyone needs to be here, I know people are traveling, people could call in to create that quorum.
This would be an evening meeting?
Evenings are preferable, I think we could do it at another time if that worked, he seemed pretty flexible, particularly on Monday and Wednesday, but we're certainly open on evenings. Are there, are there any of those days that, well, this is just your fans, who can do Monday?
Well, evening.
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 Yeah.
One, two, three, four, five, six, we've got six, that's a quorum. Who can do Wednesday?
Like, when we say evening, what time are you thinking?
Six.
I think it's six or seven.
I could do seven.
Okay, do we get a name for seven? Again, six.
There's six.
Uh, Thursday.
Again, it's seven?
Thursday.
Yeah.
What, wait, did you say Thursday?
All of, all of the quorum.
It's all our quorum, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Great. So I'll ask him which of those days works best and we'll get something warned properly and on the, on the, on the calendar.
Jim, that's not funny.
Can I, can I speak for, I have one more follow-up. I'm gonna, you know, just thinking about the consultants that have worked with this district this year from CQ Strategies and I bet any of them would be willing to consult with the consultant, which would in turn build that consultant's capabilities to serve the state, so it might be a nice way that Montpelier can lead on equity to have a couple of folks work together.
Yeah, and, and to all the people here, I mean, please feel free to weigh in with suggestions like those actively, 'cause we are in a quick process, things are gonna be moving fast, so if you have great suggestions, you know, send, you know, send me an email. I think when the, the steering committee, the screening committee gets more fully put in place, you know, we might be able to have the ability to send things directly to Mike or to certain people on the committee, so, so definitely weigh in. And also, you know, please start thinking about good, good members to have on the screening committee, members of the community, you know, parents, for the, the people who are , are teachers here, think about other, other teachers and staff members, who you think would be good recommendations and.
And that meeting will be open and televised next week?
Yes, one next week will be open and we'll have to.
Make sure we get it. Right.
Yeah. It'll certainly be open.
On the subject of outreach for the screening committee into the community, I'm, I'm just thinking that it, it is on the spring break, the board's gonna be meeting during spring break to have that discussion. And I, I assume the board is not gonna actually form that committee until next week, is that the plan?
I don't thi, I think we just do the, I did.
I think we have Mike and Mike.
Right.
Yeah, and then.
I'm trying to make it.
But is it, is it possible that we can do some outreach now to community members, especially parents of schoolchildren before they leave, to say this, you know, if, if this is an interest that you have?
Yeah.
You know, we're not, get in touch, we're not exactly sure what it's gonna look like, we're not exactly sure how it's gonna work, but this is the time to tell them, you don't have to come to the meeting that we are unfortunately holding during the school edition.
There's a front porch forum post, posting for the next couple of days.
Nice.
And just an available email address, I don't know, you know, someone who's willing to collect all kinds of feedback about the process and.
So.
Yeah.
Mike did not discuss the how you would choose that, so I was liking what you said about just contacting us, so.
Right.
We had somebody's name and then if you wanted them to write something or to appear or something before getting on the committee, you could tell them that when they come back from school break.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and, you know, think about, I think, alternate reach out, 'cause I think a common reach out is, is to some of the parents groups, which I think is great, but there's also, you know, there are certain parents that have time for the parents groups or, you know, are involved in that and that doesn't necessarily go to everyone, so.
And there are community members without children in the schools.
Yeah. Okay, fantastic. As part of the transition, can we talk quickly about the other two searches?
Yes, please.
Sure can.
Okay. So we have the curriculum director open and we just learned yesterday, the day before, the days are blending into each other, that Chris Tennessee is also leaving Union Elementary. Mary Lundine is from the staff heading the curriculum search and what I'm saying is that that has, there have been some steps that have been taken to move that along, there's already, I believe, a posting out there and candidates are applying.
Is there a closed date, Mary?
Yeah, so we posted, it'll be.
Mary.
I don't need.
Thank you Pam. Thank you Pam. I hear from the community that they can't hear you.
Oh, okay, well, I can project my voice, so I think they'll hear me. We posted two weeks ago, so we are collecting applications until Friday the 13th, but it is posted until filled, next week's break. So I have sent out an email to all of the parent groups, just asking them to get the word out as far as people that might be interested from the parents and community. We have leadership representation, we, we will have a student, we're gonna need two board members, so you can decide who that will be.
Do you have a process for, if you should have an onslaught of people that wish to be on your committee, do you have a process for deciding? Just asking.
No, I, no, I don't.
Okay.
So I'm asking the parent groups to coordinate who representatives would be. As far as the teachers, I've asked the union to work with teachers that are interested, because again, with the short timeframe that we have, I just need other people to kind of help out with that. So we are getting, the good news is, we're getting a lot of resumes for this position and there are people who are doing this job in other schools that are applying, so that is the good news. And people know about Montpelier, they know all the good work that's happening in our district, people are interested in that, they wanna be part of it, so I think it's gonna be a good process and I think that we will end up with a really good addition to the district. The timeline is the piece that's tricky because some people have gotten extensions on signing their contracts and so they emailed me and said, I can't go into late May or June.
Right.
You know, I only have so much time, so.
Needs to be quick.
My goal is to, tomorrow I'm going to put together just a memo to everybody, to the different stakeholder groups and just say that the plan is for the leadership team to go through and screen. to go through and screen all of the applicants. Now, this is a process that Brian has used for past leadership positions. So what we would be looking for is who has a license? Who is currently an administrator? Who, um, has a background or knowledge in technology? The multi-levels of teaching experience? So do they have pre-K to four? Do they have five to eight? Do they have nine to twelve? Just really looking at where are some areas of experience. One of the things that we'll look at is a literacy background. Because again, the DMG report, and I don't know if people have heard about that, but, um, it's really going to inform the way we, um, build MTSS frameworks in our schools. So the DMG right now is, um, something that our legislators are really interested in, and it's also being looked at as far as, um, special ed finance, that bill, and school finance. So there's a lot of best practices in there. So we were kind of just looking at what are some of those recommendations? And it's around universal design for learning, literacy, math. And so those are some things that I'm thinking that would be important when we're screening the applicants. So anyway, the goal is to have the first round of interviews on April thirtieth. And hopefully, we will have four candidates that will go through that process. And I would, um, ask that the screening committee then narrow it down to two. That would move on to the second interview. The second interview's gonna be a little more involved, where we are going to give the candidates a prompt and really look at, um, our school improvement plan and all of those pieces that are in there. So the universal design for learning, the math, literacy work. All of that work because we wanna keep it going. And then the cultural competence pieces around equity. So we are going to ask them to develop a presentation as if they are coming to district convocation the first day back. And your audience is the administrators and the teachers. And talk about how are we going to move this work forward? How are you going to do that as the new curriculum director? And, um, I haven't worked out all the details on that question, but that's kind of the direction that we're gonna go in. So that they really have to, we have to see them in that role, talking to us as their audience and talking about the work that's been done and how that work will continue. Because it's important, and we don't want somebody coming in who's just gonna throw it all out and say, there's my new agenda, and this is what we're gonna be doing. So, um-
I, I have a question for the board while you're still there. And that is the question of that job description. I've had a lot of concern about curriculum and technology being part of that job description. And if we're advertising for it, um, are we sure that's what we want?
I have the same question, Tina.
Yeah, me too.
I mean, that's what we budgeted for, and we did not make a different decision during the budget process. But that was because we had a situation that was, as far as we knew-
Stable.
Stable.
Working.
Could I make-
Maybe Brian looks like he has something.
I mean, I, I, you know, a- again, given the timeline, given that it's out there, I, I would not recommend making substantive changes and then potentially have to hire somebody else. If you say, we think it's time to separate these positions back out again. The rationale for doing it five years ago, five years ago, was-
Long life span.
Yeah, that's right. Um, was not just fortuitous because we had an interim curriculum director and a director of technology who retired. But it was thoughtful in that curriculum and technology are inextricably linked. You know, for us, it's like another utility. It's just as important as hot water or electricity or heat. If you're interested, I would say if you're interested in revisiting this, I would do it with the candidate that this search committee comes with, you know.
All right, I would add though, too, that to, to echo some of what Brian's saying, and is to recognize that we also will have four technology experts in the district, as well as our tech integrationists. So the responsibilities for that particular position may, may only be at the really, really administrative level because of all of the other folks that are working in that department.
That's what I would say at this point. I see that position really being responsible for E-rate and managing and overseeing the technology plan, which has already been written. So it's really pulling that group together, looking at the plan, making the tweaks that are necessary. More of that high-level stuff. Whereas the interventionists who are at each building, they're the boots on the ground, the people that are able to coach the teachers and provide that level of support.
I, I just think, and the board knows, I've had some displeasure with how the technology has progressed lately. And so, um, I, I'm wondering if we're handling that in the best way possible. I don't want to, uh, waylay you, but I wanna be honest to the applicant. So is it possible for the applicants to say something about, we're, we're thinking about this part of the job? I, I don't know. I'm bringing it up now to say, where are we?
Yeah, I guess we don't know what you're thinking.
That's why I'm bringing it up.
Yeah, and I think, Tina, to respond to that, I think depending on the district, there are some districts that do blend, uh, curriculum and technology. There are others that separate those two positions. So it, it might be that, and I can tell you, we have both right now in our applicant pool. We have people that are doing both or have experience in both, and others that are more traditional curriculum.
It's harder to find both. There are two different kinds of people.
Yes.
I will say, oh, go ahead. I, I just wanna say, I, I'm so far away from considering that concept that I think we have to be very careful that we don't send the, send the administration off with a mixed message. I think the board's position right now is that there's no change. And we may have that conversation, but we could not possibly have that conversation in a timely manner that would influence this hiring. So, uh, you know, this is where the board speaks as many voices, or the board speaks as one. And I think that we would need to have deliberation before we can speak as one on this.
Well, I mean, a suggestion I have is this is a position that we could also hire on a one-year contract.
With the conversation that we might, I, the reason, I understand what you're saying, but the, the reason, as, uh, Michelle said, we didn't consider in the budget, was we didn't consider that we were making a change. But now that we are-
You know, I, I would agree with what Steve is saying. You know, at this point, I, I would feel, um, disingenuous if Mary or other members of this committee had to send a different message to the people that have already applied. Oh, by the way, this is a one-year position contingent upon the board, continuing the position as, as it's currently listed. A- and I think, in the same way that it could potentially dilute the superintendent search until you made your decision here, um, it was not, I will be the one that told, that suggested to Jim. I delegated this to Mary. At no point did I consider separating those, simply because, again, of the timeline. And, and I think if you were going to go in this direction, Mary would have to have some very, um, difficult conversations right now and could potentially reduce the current applicant pool, which she has already indicated is relatively strong.
Well, I wanna be clear, Mary. Would, would take back their application.
I would be worried.
If they saw that big of a change in the process.
I, I, I think Steve's point is very well taken. At, at this point in the process, the board should be clear that there's no change for now. And unless the board wants to deliberate further, um, but I think that comes with some great risk.
I want you to know, Mary, I didn't assume that you knew any of this. I, I appreciate what you've been doing. It's just that it's a discussion we didn't have, and I'm, I'm really sorry we didn't have it, having nothing to do with you.
Yeah, and I think it's a product of things moving very greatly.
I think, too, just that conversation, and I know that you talked about just a strategic plan later down the road. That would be something that would be great as part of the strategic plan conversation.
And, and maybe this conversation, I'm thinking, is okay, given your explanation about the high level. But then I think as a board, I'm going to suggest that we rediscover technology in the system as a whole, so that it can work better.
Right.
So maybe it's redoing the people we have and what they do and how they do it. I don't know, but it's worth a discussion, I would say.
Yeah. So I'll finish quickly, cause I know you, you've gotta move on. So, um, so the first round of interviews, we're planning for April thirtieth. The second, um, would be Thursday, May third. I think it's May third, whatever that Thursday is. Um, then Friday, send the person who we want to recommend to Brian. So he would interview, and then you would see that person, I think you have a board meeting following week?
Sixteen.
No, the sixteenth.
Yep.
So what I would ask you is if you would consider having a special board meeting if some of these people are moving along again, so they can tell their districts who are gonna be out looking for people in May to fill those slots. So it's like that phenomenon effect, and everybody's kind of panicking. So just put that out there to you to consider.
Can I make one more suggestion? I, I think it's very important that, uh, you know, you said two private board members. I wonder if you should be consideration to who those board members should be tonight. I think it's just given, particularly the curriculum element, that really having, uh, board members look, that we have a curriculum director that really reflects some of the community values and some of the forward-looking things that we're doing in this community. And maybe helping to build the rest of the steering community, help with outreach to, you know, bully parents and other community members on. I think that's something we can do without, without interrupting the current search, and I think probably directing it in a good, good way. I don't know if we're ready to think about who on the board would wanna step up and do that.
Mary, do you have, it's sometimes easier with folks if they have the, do you have the times already scheduled for those?
For the thirtieth, it's, we're blacking out eight to three-thirty. Just to give people some breaks in between candidates, give people time to go have some lunch. The second round, that Thursday, we're looking at the afternoon. So it would probably be from twelve to four.
So it sounds like, uh, pretty much all day, Monday the thirtieth afternoon, on Thursday the third? Are there people that would be willing and able? I would also note that Mrs. Arnold is lurking in the, in the wings and is going to come and make a similar request as well.
And I just wanted to just throw in one more thing. So one of the things that I've been trying to do is just really think about representation from Roxbury and Montpelier. Um, so we do have a teacher from Roxbury that will be on the committee. Ben's gonna be reaching out to families there as one of our parent reps. So again, you know, to make this inclusive, Roxbury needs to be fully included in this. So we're trying to do that reach out.
Can we just have people, a lot of people respond to you if they're available?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll-
Yeah, that's fine.
We'll do it, we'll do it pretty quickly. And thank you, Mary. We know this is, uh-
Thank you.
Uh, extra, extra work on your plate, and we much appreciate it. It's been great work.
Mrs. Arnold, please return to your favorite place in the room, right behind the microphone.
I, I fly in not, at, just at the beginning of the process. Because I have the official word yesterday that I'm gonna facilitate the new principal at UES, and I'm happy to do so. Brian and I touched base a little bit because the advertisement needs to go out. So that's step one. That hasn't happened. I'm hoping that will go out this week. Think we can find some time.
Yes.
I think I'm gonna skip the conference I'm supposed to be at tomorrow and do this instead. And so just thinking about those logistics, next week's vacation. And then the following week is vacation for other members in the state of Vermont, too. So there's almost like two weeks of vacation that we might be dealing with, depending on who applies. But that gives us at least two weeks for people to generate applications. I mean, we probably will have in the middle, but I think it's like three weeks usually, or something like that. But, um, we'll at least be able, hopefully, to get some, some applications in. And thinking about what the timeframe might be for us. And a lot of the things Mary was talking about, the process pieces, the, uh, the round one interview, the round two interview with a, a prompt as well, but very different one. I, I need to work with Lynda Bopri and Chris Hennessy at the elementary school, too, uh, to talk about, you know, what are some of those initiatives? They want people to be able to continue to work or to lead in the future, too, to provide those prompts that, that fit that school. And I'm thinking like, if we can begin interviewing people the second week of May, which is May seventh, that would be ambitious, but I really think we need to strive for that. I, I will, I am remaining really optimistic because I do believe people want to come to Montpelier, want to work in Montpelier, because we do have a great school system. And I do think it's gonna be similar, that people may have to be asking for permission to be able to interview. So that will be a glitch, which is just what happens at this time of the year. Similar to Mary, reaching out to some of the other groups. It's a little bit different makeup of the committee. I really would only request one board member. That would be awesome. Somebody would volunteer for that. Ben, um, is going to work with me, and we split up at the leadership level. So there's a couple of leadership members, but working with Mary and a couple working with me. We're not altering all of the committees. Um, but again, looking for, um, some, a couple of parents, community members, a couple of teachers, board member, an instructional assistant. I think at, at, at a, at a school level, it's important to have an admin assistant be a part of it. The assistant principal, um, as well as maybe one of the support folks from guidance, social worker, or nurse, behavior specialist, one of those folks. So ultimately, the committee could end up having about eleven people on it, counting myself as the facilitator. So that's kind of where we're at, uh, where I'm at. Got a lot of work to do this week. Um, I wish Chris Hennessy well, and I thank him every day for having me on. But it, it will be great, and we will find the right person. I think, I think that's it, cause again, I'm just starting.
Great.
I was there.
Yeah, and likewise, yeah. Thank you, thank you much for doing this. And we will, similarly, uh, I think, you know, I, I think one board member, uh, is, is fine for this search. I've got-
I would love to be on this search committee.
I wanna be on this one.
Oh, my.
Yeah.
No fighting.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
I'll let you all work it out.
Yeah, yeah, it's time to step away from the microphone.
Yeah, I was just gonna say for the, the curriculum search, but I don't wanna put pressure on, on Ryan. At least it doesn't work, but having two would be great to have, uh, of one Roxbury voice. If it, if it doesn't work for either of you, you know, understood. But, um, I wanna offer one of those slots to one of the two of you, if you can do it.
So we'll talk about some scheduling. I don't wanna put Becky on the spot, but she has been a part of our facility search. Would you care to speak to it a little bit?
I can. We've, um, uh, the, the committee, um, includes myself and includes, um, Grant Geisler from Admin, and includes Brian, includes two parents and a teacher. And we, uh, candidates were screened, um, to meet certain criteria. And we called in four candidates, interviewed them, spent almost an hour with each one of them. And there, and with a unanimous consideration, there are the four candidates, two, and pulled, uh, the two final candidates back together again. And we used scenario testing with them as well, which is a really good exercise to use for second, um, interviews. It actually gives you a chance not to just see what their qualifications are, but how their heads work. So, which is a really important consideration because we've got the playground coming on board. We've got the bond vote that's just happened. So we have a lot of moving parts in facilities right now. And, um, was it just yesterday? I'm losing track of my days.
It was, uh, Tuesday.
It was. Uh, recommended a final candidate to Brian, and now we're checking references and going through due diligence and, and that part of it as well. And, uh, hopefully, um, our chief candidate will accept.
There will be, uh, either way, there'll be, um, a candidate in consent agenda for the next MRPS meeting, which, not the next one, next week, but the next regularly scheduled one for May second.
Yep.
Is that in Roxbury?
That will be in Roxbury, yes. Thank you very much.
It will be.
I was gonna say it at the end, but you saved me. That's right. May second, May second will be in Roxbury.
That's an exciting update. Thank you.
So may I ask a question? And that is, not for Mary, cause she's long in the process, but for Pam who's just begun. And I don't know if it's written somewhere or tradition, but I might suggest that the committee bring, for the principal, bring two, uh, candidates forward to the board, and the board decides, which is done in lots of places.
Yep. That was a tradition that we later found was illegal.
Oh.
So the, the board, to, to clarify, the board, the board is responsible for hiring the superintendent. And superintendent, um, is responsible for all other hires.
Is that a, is that, I'm, I'm curious to ask if that's a law or is it policy governance procedure?
It is a law.
Okay.
It is in statute.
Yep.
The, the committee brings us one candidate.
Okay.
Um, good. Well, thank everyone for, it's not a lot of work, but, um, a lot of great work's being done, so.
Uh, Jim, two things. One is how is the decision gonna be made which board member, and I do mean mono, i-mono, Tina or I, will be on the, on any, on any of these. Who makes the decision about which board member goes on to these? And then the other is, we've talked about hiring consultants to help us with diversity and inclusion. We haven't taken an action to require that. I just wanna understand in each of these positions, these district-wide positions, what are we doing on, um, taking an action to build a best practice around that? Even on these short timelines, at least to consult as, um, like Silly said, you could, you know, do something if we want, if we wanna insist on that or require that, or what do we do?
Uh, first question, um, I'd like to pay on the opportunity to thank Chris Hennessy more, but maybe we could squeeze, we could, maybe we squeeze both of you on, onto that search committee and stop it there.
I can promise that I will be well behaved. I'm not sure about Steve.
I don't, I can't.
What, have I signed up?
Yeah. I can promise I'll, that we'll keep each other in check.
Yeah. Um, I think that might be a solution unless Pam has that huge of an objective.
Fine.
On the second.
Not help you.
Um... I, go ahead.
My suggestion is that you're gonna have a meeting if I can take you, 'cause I'm not gonna come next week. We're gonna have a meeting.
Well, I was, I was waiting for a couple times and I think more than, more than.
We'll think of either meeting, but, um, that folks could come with more specific proposal to next week's meeting about the option, so that the board would have something before that it could consider.
One, one, one suggestion is we've been working with CQ strategies, right, Brian?
Yes.
We have, we have an existing relationship with Kathy Johnson, right?
Kathy Johnson.
Yeah.
So if that, if she does consulting on that topic, maybe we could ask for that.
Kathy Johnson might like to be on the committee.
Mm-hmm.
She is a, a member of the community.
That, so what I would suggest, Steve, is that, you know, the meeting with the consultant will be, will be an open meeting. Why don't we put on the agenda, why don't we come in and have some sort of well-thought-out and realistic motion about ensuring that we have diversity, equity and inclusion issues as part of this search.
But I'm thinking the other two, the other searches.
Well, I mean, well, I, the, one of the problems is that.
We don't do those searches.
Well, if, if, you know, if we've got most of the candidate pool for the curriculum position, uh, relatively closed out by next week, um, there, there might be things we can do in the superintendent search and the principal search that we're a little letting the game in for the curriculum search.
Like rubric design and the, uh, and, uh, cultural competency understanding.
Question, I mean, certainly we can ask, you know, we can make sure, do the questions. We can, we can do the rubric to, to make sure that, uh, you know, certain biases are accounted for and hopefully eliminated. Uh...
I mean, that person could work directly with.
Established, so we can.
Right. That person could just be a resource to the administrator who's leading that also. I'm not trying to get in there and have a giant group process. What I'm saying is that we should at least, you know, if, if we're serious about building a model for the future, let's do the little bit we can do now, which is let's get the, let's get the consultant in there to consult a little bit.
Yeah, no, let's, let's do that. And let's have a, a concrete motion next week about the practical things that we expect from these, these processes that, that accounts for that. Uh, anything else? We are, we are running, running late.
Way.
Uh, I, yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Can we do these first readings quickly and?
No.
No, I have questions.
I, I think it's, I think people are spent. I, I think, um, I would, if, could I just say for the record, I'll, in terms of policy readings, we'll just repeat items eight and nine as written.
Yep.
And then a reminder that we'll have seven, a number to be adopted that are all available currently on our website, um, under MRSD policies and they're listed under the in-process tab on that page.
Because there was, we were so quick, there might be a change in nine, which Bridget talked about. And so we could get that in and it still could be warned.
Okay. So we're gonna kick.
It wouldn't change the agendas.
No, but.
So we're gonna do eight and nine on the second. Uh, I, I think we can easily kick this governance and forward plan to the second. Perfect. Well, thank you very much. Uh, sorry we ran over a couple of pieces up there. Need a discussion. And thanks everyone for coming.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second? There's two?
Two. All of us in favor?
Aye.